Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. The time is 9:00 a.m. We have a full agenda today. Our city administrator, Britt, is getting on board our first appearance for the day, which is Buck McAlpin regarding the ALS intercept rates and his recommendations as in your packet. I just wanted to know, before time, I'm going to have to leave by a quarter to 11:00. I have medical issues I have to deal with, and so Counsel Bearable...
Can you hear me there, Britt?
Vice Mayor will have to take over, so if we're not done by then. Okay, thank you. Britt?
Hey Buck, can you hang on just one second while I get set up?
Sure, yeah, I see you.
Okay, thanks.
And when Mr. McAlpin's going to make his presentation, we have in the audience our fire chief, Frederiksson, here as well, and so we may allude to some issues and some quick questions from our fire chief, so thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to go to item number two, Matt Reed, S.C.H., review plans and specs for lift stations, CDA upgrade.
Okay, very good. Matt, we'll get you in and out.
Sorry, Scott, technical difficulties.
Morning, Matt.
Good morning. Okay, so this item on the agenda, there is, I brought a couple of sets of the plans and specifications today. You might recall, we had been working on getting some of that information together for improvements to all of the lift stations in town, and it basically revolves around the communications and the being able to notify the Public Works Department when there's issues with the lift station, high flows, things like that. So we've got that all ready to go. We did apply a while back, and I think it was January, John did such an eloquent job of presenting and getting you guys some CD, helping get you guys some CDVG money. I think it was $65,000, if I'm remembering right, Britt. So that money should be available, hopefully, very soon. It was awarded, it's just got to go through the proper processes through the county and should be available soon. But we want to get it out for bids, so that when we get the okay, we can hopefully have the bids in, award it, and likely this project will carry over into next year. The availability of these things, like everything else, is just, it's many, many weeks out, so the sooner we can get the bids together and get the contractor on board, the sooner they can get that stuff ordered. So I can answer any questions, otherwise, all I'm looking for is authorization to advertise for bids for the project.
Thank you, Matt. Counsel Johnson?
I'll move the advertisement for bids.
Counsel Johnson moves to approve the advertisements for bids from S.C.H. for the plans and specifications for the lift station, S.C.D.A. upgrades. Is there support, support by Counsel Freely? Any further discussion? Counsel Paulson?
I just have one quick question, Matt. If it carries over into next year, is there other funds that we can apply or grant dollars that we can apply for?
Possibly. That might be something we could look at, yeah. I think, as long as it doesn't require that any of the, some of them require you can't bid it till you have their money, but yes, we certainly look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate applying for ITRB grant funding also to help with this project.
Okay, thanks, Britt.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and while I keep working on these technical issues, we'll go to item number three, request from Public Works Department to authorize lease of loader and skid steer.
Jim, would you like to come up and give us a little explanation? We had, we had a previous conversation about this. Jim, good morning. Jim Rosvid, our Public Works Director.
Morning. Yeah, see, we're looking into, what we have is, we got a couple of newer loaders, they were leases, worked out a good deal for us. What we're sitting on is, we're sitting on two 30-year-old loaders there at the garage that, one's running about 16,000 hours on it, and one, we're assuming is over that. It's had a couple new Hobbs meters on it, so we can't tell you exactly what they are. But we were requesting a lease for a new 544, which would replace the cat loader, which is, like I say, 30 years old. The bucket is beyond repair. We're looking at 25,000 for a bucket. That specific loader came in behind another loader several times last winter with a chain because we had issues with it. Fortunately, they would give us $38,000 for a trade-in on that loader, which to me is And that's because the market for availability on used equipment or any equipment right now is tough to get. And I know the prices just keep going up and up. We did complete our lease on our 444. We did buy an extended warranty for $5,000 on that, so that, we'll carry that loader for another five years where there's nothing out of pocket on that besides major, besides wear items. And then the, we've gotten into where we're doing a lot more in the alleys now because there's no steam, so the snow's got to come out of them alleys. So the other item was a 325G CAT skid steer. That's a lease also. We need something like that just for everyday work. That would allow us to have a brush head, it would allow us to have a stump grinder. We've got a lot of ditching to do in the city and around the city. So that type of equipment, you need to do all the brushing to freeze the ground down in the winter, so in the wintertime, on our slow time, we can go and we can start doing some of this ditching. Some of the ditching we can do in the fall and the summer, but your wet spots around Silver Creek and out to Northern Engine and that, that's all winter work. But over the years, that's choked up, and it makes such a light footprint, the, it puts out about 5.4 pounds per square inch on the track, so it doesn't make a mess. It works well for landscaping and in town, so. And between the two of them, I think we're looking at about, and they're, they would both be leases, but we're looking at about 55,000 for the two items per year, for a five, for I believe, a five-year lease, and then we pay a dollar at the end of that, and we would own them.
Thank you, Jim. We have some questions from the council. Sherry, could you just give us an idea of this request by our Public Works Director? I think we anticipated this last year and the year before about, you know, some of these equipment items, particularly with Public Works, and I know you had mentioned to us previously about a potential charter bond to be considered for us to take a look at in our next budgetary process, but the request is to maybe start the process for the lease based upon, you know, as the prices keep going up. So what is, where are we at with that, and from our financial perspective, what can we do?
I would definitely recommend leasing this rather than putting it on the bond. It's a little easier to handle, a little easier to budget, especially if, I thought it was five years, and I thought they were a little over 16,000 for each lease, or was I wrong, 18 and 16?
Yep.
I believe the 325G, which is the skid loader, is 16,000 per year. I think the loader was 34,000 or 36,000 per year for lease.
Okay, definitely, it's easier to budget. I'd rather do that than put it on the bond. And we probably won't get it until when?
Well, actually, they are both available now, and that's, if we don't jump on it, I think we're going to struggle to, for the availability, to be on them for a year or two. And I think the price is going to go up extremely, because like I was telling Larry earlier, we're arguing with a truck we already signed a purchase agreement on of them bumping at 16,300.
Sherry, your recommendation is that we lease, and so...
And there's a trade-in with that, too.
Yeah, there's, there's a trade-in of 38,000 with the cat loader and 17,000 with the case loader. The case, I would say, we'll keep it in the yard for a yard loader. We might, if things work out, we might be able to even sell that on surplus down the line, if we know things are working out with three newer loaders and a skid loader. Then we could probably, and that one's not worth a lot, but...
Thank you, Jim. Counsel Johnson?
You answered my question about lead time, and you answered my question about the bond. My other question is, could you describe what ditching is for myself and others who might not know?
Sure. Ditching, the biggest part of any of your rotor, your construction, is ditching, ditching, ditching. They always preach that. You don't want water in your roadbed, or, you know, you've got to have ditches to take the water out of the city, and we, and we're, we need a lot of, we're behind on maintenance on a lot of that. I don't know if you people are familiar with the old Langer Equipment Road, the Silver Creek. We've been working down at the wastewater treatment plant ditching, so what we'll do is, we'll go down in there, we'll, we'll just basically clean out those ditches from years of vegetation, beaver dams, buildup, so you've got that water flowing out of the city, so it's not all sitting in the city. Right now, that, between the new arena and Northern Engine, that ditch should be about 10 or 12 feet wide, it's probably 40 feet wide right now, because it's holding so much water. So to alleviate that and get that out of there, it'll dry up our roads in the city, and it'll help everything in the long run, it'll help the blacktopping and the patching.
Basically, we're going and digging it out so the water can flow.
Yeah.
Okay.
So your water's not sitting there as a settling pond or...
Mosquito haven.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Counsel Beyondich?
Two questions. Sherry, would, is there money we'd put aside for something like this, or where would it come from?
It would definitely, we'd have to take it from money that we have set aside for emergencies like this, but it wouldn't be budgeted for next year.
It would be.
Yeah, in the following years.
So would it be coming from that contingency fund?
Which I have 92,000 in there. That, or else...
Snow removal fund, because it'll also be used for snow removal?
Because we're on budget with that, so.
And the other question is, last spring, we had an issue with a home that was along that creek, and is it, because it was holding so much water, would that alleviate some of that water issue in that area?
Yeah, it would actually, it'll bring down the water table there, because your, that groundwater that's sitting around those homes and that, it'll leach into, into the, and carry it off instead of, you know, when the creeks stay full, you've got head pressure there, so it doesn't allow your groundwater to dissipate and work its way out, basically out of the city. And like I said, we are, we've been working this spring down at the wastewater treatment plant right now and working our way north, but we know we've got a lot of work ahead of us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Beyondich. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Sherry, the, are we saying, you guys, that it's about 55,000 a month for the lease, between the two of them?
A year.
I mean, excuse me, a year, so...
I think that's a little high, 55, because we looked it up, it's 37 and then 16.
Is that what it was, 37?
It was like 40.
53.
It's like 54,000 a year.
And, yeah, that's a year, so if you divide it monthly, we can handle this year.
So if we approve this, then we'd be ordering, we'd be doing it now, since they're available, and so that equates to, what's 4,500 a month? So that'd be $27,000 out of this year's budget to pay for that, and, and we would go into whatever this, the snow removal fund would be, a portion of that, and then we can budget then accordingly for the next four years, is that correct? Okay, and then I have one other question, and I don't know, I guess we'd have to probably find out the pros and cons, but if we do go for the capital equipment bond, which I'm sure we will be looking into, is there a prepayment penalty if we pay the lease off early? Should it be advantageous going under the bond?
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head, I could find out.
Okay.
And I would definitely check the interest rates.
I guess that's what I was going after. Sometimes those lease rates are a little higher than our bond rate, or bond interest rate, so if we could maybe check on that, that'd be great.
Okay. The thing I like on the lease is your warranty. You're, you got 100% warranty for that continuation of the lease, and if that machine has to go down, they'll bring you another new machine for your charge until that other one's up and running again. So you're, you're not down with downtime, or you're not getting into a rental of another piece of equipment.
So that warranty coverage over five years is probably pretty valuable?
It's, yes, it is.
Okay, but thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Any other questions from the council?
Well, you're not, I was going to make a motion, but we'll...
Counsel Bearable?
Jim, one of the things that we've looked at, do we need to, being that the ditches and stuff from the new ITMEC and that you're going to be cleaning out, do we need to get any special permits, since it's inside the city to do this? I thought in the past, we had to get a permit from the DNR or somebody to dig those ditches out.
Yeah, actually, Silver Creek is a permitted site. We do, we do have an existing permit that's still valid on that. I've been in contact with the DNR with Kim Bolin on that, she's the DNR contact. The other ones, if they're an existing ditch and they're, they're not regulated, we can maintain our own ditches, that's how that runs, so...
So this treatment plan is probably one of those?
Yes.
Okay. I have one other, one other question. I think we absolutely need to do this in this time and place. I have a, and I'm going to put this out here for the public, for transparency, I have a grandson that works for Bobcat, and he's doing international buying for them, and he said he's seen nothing but prices going sky-high all over the world right now, including the United States. If we wait, he figures the inflation rate's going to, going to top 15% on these pieces of equipment. That's from him working it every single day down in, for Bobcat, and that's what he's doing. He just told me, if you need equipment, do it now, don't wait. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bearable. Counsel Freely, you were prepared?
I would, I would move to authorize the lease arrangement for the loader and the skid steer for the Public Works Department.
Moved by Counsel Freely, been supported by Counsel Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Back to item number one, we do have Buck McAlpin on the phone to talk about this, and we also have Scott Frederiksson, interim acting, fire chief, here to discuss the ALS intercept rates.
Welcome, Mr. McAlpin.
Mr. Mayor and councilmember, sorry I couldn't be there in person today. I'm actually at an ambulance billing conference out in Florida this week, but I could just dive right into it quick, like, as Chief Lewis, back in 2019, was working with me, just before we took over the billing operations for the city, shared with me a document from Pagean Wolfburg, which is the ambulance leader rounding issues with anti-kickback and the intercept rates. And I know right before the chief left, a few months before, that he had increased the rates to $600 for an ALS intercept, which I said, "Chief, we should look back at that original opinion from Pagean Wolfburg," after OIG, offices of Inspector General, came out a few years ago with a memo that was included in your packet around anti-kickback statute. And really, I thought, and what brought it to light for us at TransMedic, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is that one of the neighboring services also raised their fee to $600 when Virginia would take a patient out of their community. That clearly would violate the anti-kickback statute, that Virginia was paying basically a Medicare referral rate to that city to the patient. So I did meet with the interim chief in Bratton, one of the other communities we talked to a couple weeks ago, and I thought, let's kind of get our hands around this before it gets away from us and adjust some of these rates. And I have worked with neighboring communities that are clients of TransMedic's also to adjust the rate appropriately, so we're sure we don't get into any trouble with the anti-kickback. And we didn't want to be from TransMedic sending out statements on behalf of Virginia or vice versa, we have mostly iron-range clients that would make it look that way. So really, I believe to me, an offset rate is $600. What the Pagean Wolfburg law firm say is that rate should be between 350 and 400, and really that rate set off the Medicare fee schedule rate, what an allowable reimbursement would be if one of Chief Frederiksson's ambulants responded, when his paramedics got into, let's say, the tower ambulance, the tower ambulance transported that patient, be able to bill an ALS level of care for the tower ambulance. Tower ambulance would receive that, let's just say, $800 figure, and roughly about half of that could go back to Virginia's ALS intercept rate. The second piece of this is when Virginia, which we know is happening just because of some staffing issues and some of the problems we're having, especially rural Minnesota with our volunteer, less staff services, is when Virginia ambulance goes to a community, let's say one EMT shows up in first response, but they can't transport the patient, that patient goes into the Virginia ambulance. We bill that just like an ordinary Virginia ambulance call, even though it's out of their service area. Those small communities, I believe because the high intercept rate Virginia has currently, is charging a quite an enhanced rate, as high as $600. If Virginia issues a check back to that city, according to the law firm of Pagean Wolfburg, that, in this document Chief Lewis had done, that would violate the anti-kickback statute. They did talk about that yesterday at the conference I met this week, Mr. Mayor and members. So what I would recommend is that the council amend the fee schedule for the ambulance and move the ALS intercept rate to $400, and any money that the city would pay a basic life support ambulance, if the city of Virginia took the patient out of their community, would not exceed $150. There's nothing in law that requires you to pay when you go do a mutual aid call, but you can pay a reimbursement fee, and the exact number that Pagean Wolfburg had in 19 was 146.19 cents, but with inflation the last couple of years, I calculated if we're at 150, that we would pay, say, Tower or Evolus or whoever for first responding, that fee would not violate the anti-kickback statute.
Thank you, Mr. McAlpin. Just before we go to Counsel Bearable, Chief, is that kind of an end in a nutshell?
Yeah, I couldn't say it any better. It's, hey Buck, could you talk a little bit about what a violation of the OIG would result in as well? I found that to be jarring.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Chief, usually what happens with a violation is they'll suspend your Medicare enrollment for up to 10 years, and I have seen fines of up to $10,000 for occurrence. So the biggest issue, of course, when about 75% of your payer mix is governmental payer mix, we wouldn't want that to happen. So I think, Mr. Mayor and members, we're fixing this, had a really good time to address this.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McAlpin. Thank you, Chief. If you should hang for a minute, we might have some more questions. Counsel Bearable?
Yeah, I've got some questions, Mr. McAlpin. We're getting a lot of kickback through Rams organization, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, from the mayors and stuff at these smaller communities, that they cannot afford the big fees that we're going to be charging on intercepts. And they're starting to tell us that instead of even calling for an intercept, they're just going to call Virginia and have them go for a, for running, and then they'll get the whole thing, because they can't afford it out of their conference to pay out the $600 or whatever it was deemed to be. That's going to be an issue if we're going to continue with moving forward with all this shortage of individuals in ambulance and fire stuff up here in the seven-county area up here that we have for the tachytonic relief area, and we just had over 100 people at a meeting here about a month ago, maybe a little bit longer than that ago, and this is an issue where these small communities have not budgeted, so they've got to figure out a way to do that. Do you have any suggestions? Because otherwise, our department's probably going to get inundated. That's a concern that I have as a counselor, because there's nothing that says that they have to call us for an intercept, they can just call direct and get us to run. You know, if you've got a heart attack or something like that, I don't think there's any actual protocol that I can find that says we have to, or they have to respond first. They just tell you they don't have the people. That's what's happening. So where do we go from there? We can't afford to keep running and running and running. We've got enough runs already on a shortage of staff here in Virginia. Give me an answer to that. I think that law and reimbursement thing is ludicrous by Medicare. It absolutely is why healthcare needs to be taken care of and redone. All of healthcare is full of crap, and excuse my language, but it is. You know, and I can say that from a professional standpoint, being a retired pharmacist, and I dealt with this stuff all the time, but I'm looking and watching these changes they're making, and they don't even want to open up the stuff nationwide, and that's a problem. They need to open up this insurance nationwide. Face it, you can't just have it in one state. It's crazy. That's my, my rant and rave right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Bearable. Counsel Paulson has a question, and then we'll go to Counsel Johnson. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I read this at least three times, and I'm still very confused. So, Mr. McAlpin, I'm not sure if you could explain, I'm looking at, at the, I guess, from the law firm, it's page three, under the joint ALS/BLS agreements, and it states, the agreements all provide that when the VFD is dispatched to provide, and then it goes on, we can retain X amount of dollars, the BLS can retain X amount of dollars. Could you explain a little bit about what this anti-kickback statute is and how it would be violated? Are you basically saying that each community is billing Medicare for that, their own intercept rate?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and counselor, what they, what they're talking about with the anti-kickback statute is, basically, you take the, and really, it's Medicare and Medicaid is always our concern, and the commercial market is such a small amount of the market that Medicare and Medicaid overshadow that piece. What they're talking about is what's allowed to be paid to the ambulance now. Let's say, an ordinary commercial insurance ambulance ride for Virginia for, say, the conversations, $2,000. We know if we have that same ride for a Medicare or Medicaid patient, we're on a federal fee schedule, so an advanced life support paramedic run pays about $450 for a base ride and $9 a loaded mile.
How much, could you, could you repeat that, please? How much? 400 and how much?
$450 roughly for an advanced life support base rate and $9 a loaded mile for Medicare reimbursement.
Nine.
But on the commercial side, those mileage loads run between about $25 and $31 across the state now, so you can see the discrepancy. So with our basic life support ambulances, and I agree 100% with the council member before you, the pharmacist gentleman I saw up there before, our basic life support ambulances are having a lot of problems with staffing. I attended the Rams conversation and listened to that. There's lots of work to be done about what, what happens with that. But really, all they're saying here is Virginia, no fault to Virginia, they're being paged by the county to respond to Tower, let's say, because nobody answered the ambulance pager, and/or they need a paramedic intercept, they are going out picking up a Medicare patient that would fall under the OIG guidelines, and then you wouldn't want to turn around and have Tower bill back the city $600 when that might be the total amount that they get for the call at Virginia. So we don't want Virginia to charge to be giving you Tower patients that fall into their service area that's below what's considered a reasonable reimbursement amount for first responder services, which is the 150. And on the ALS intercept side... And on the ALS intercept side, I did the same thing you did. I've read this thing 15 times, and it's very attorney garble, but I do know a lot about the OIG background, being in healthcare. With the anti-kickback statute, on the ALS intercept piece, there's a percentage. So if the total amount, the Tower would get paid if the Virginia paramedic was in the truck, it averages about $823. If we stay below that 50% threshold, then that wouldn't be the kickback piece. That's why that 350 to $400 number is recommended by Page and Wolfburg. And with inflation, I feel that we're very safe at 400. So I've worked with Cloquet Med One. I was on a call with Chief Jenkel a few months ago, where we talked about this rate of 350 to 400 to staple almost level. And it really all became out of the conversation when Chief Lewis requested this OIG opinion back in 2019.
Okay, thank you for that. So basically, if we go over a 50% charge, we will, that threshold of AKS actually can engage, and we could be in trouble?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then my next question for you, in that same paragraph, now, this is, this document was from 2019, in that same, under the joint ALS/BLS agreements, it says the very last sentence, or second to last sentence, the VFD would still incur a $435 loss. So each time that we engage our ALS service, we will be at a loss if that's a Medicare patient and not a, what do you call the other patient or the other person that doesn't have Medicare insurance? You just, non-Medicare?
Private pay.
Right, like a private pay. Okay, so, so I guess what I'm looking, that's one question. And then I'm looking for how, since you guys are doing the billing, what is the percentage? I know we're at about 70, like you said, 70, 73% of Medicare patients. What does that equate to in dollars lost revenue for the Virginia Fire Department when we engage our ALS services to outside communities?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Counselor, you just brought up the million dollar question, and this is the problem that's going on around the country. Currently, the federal government is doing an audit on ambulance rates. We worked with the American Ambulance Association a couple of years ago. It got held up a year with COVID. But we know, and you just caught the trip, when Chief Frederickson sends an ambulance out to pick a Medicare patient up, that ambulance run is paid, we think, between $300 and $350 below the cost to offer that service. And we could break that down for you and look at your Medicare runs. I could have Beth and Greg, our finance team, do that for the city, because that's exactly, you just described, the exact problem with EMS, not just in Minnesota, but across the state. As well, we have 1.55 million Medicaid, the last time I looked, for 25% of our payer mix across the state of Minnesota is Minnesota Care or Medicaid, which in law, our statute says that the Medicaid, the Minnesota Medicaid rates mirror the federal Medicaid rates. Our mileage and our base rate, Medicaid and Medicare are the same. So probably close to 70% to what the Virginia ambulance does is about $300 below the cost to offer the service for those rides.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we do make a bunch of it up on the commercial side, and we try to do things on the commercial space. And the other good thing about Medicare/Medicaid, sorry to interrupt you, is that it pays quickly. It pays every two weeks. We get quite a dump into the bank account that we post cash. They're quick pay. The problem is, we need to have the government adjust that rate.
Okay, so, okay, thank you for that. So this kind of leads me to, I would really appreciate if that information could be provided, like the loss, I would say, the old, like, for one year, if you could give us a snapshot in time, what are overall intercept percentages versus Medicare versus commercial pay insurance runs? And then, to me, this would be very important as our city moves forward with our budgetary process, to understand, you know, from year to year, what is that going to look like? And maybe it's a two-year snapshot of, you know, what it was in the past. Is that something that could be done so we could understand from a budgetary standpoint what we could recognize? I mean, we're going to be recognizing a loss annually on our ALS intercept. Is that correct? Especially for Medicare, if it's 70%, we're only operating at a 30% profit then on commercial pay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Counselor. I would say you're correct on the Medicare patients, and of course, not all of our Medicare. We could look, our software is very detailed to show us what's Medicare and what's commercial or Medicaid on it.
Okay, so if that information could be provided, I would appreciate that. We just, we just had an audit come forward with not some good numbers. So I'd like to maybe try to compare, you know, what information you have, Transmedic, going forward as we, you know, create our budget for following years.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Before we go to Counsel Johnson, Mr. McGalpin, as we're discussing this and these recommendations based on the potential violation of the federal, or the OIG, the federal law with respect to this, so what is the timeframe for us to make a determination and decision to make these adjustments as are required to do so, so we don't get deemed, for lack of a better term, on the kickback aspect of it? Do we have a little bit of time, wish to vet this out before we come to a decision about these recommended adjustments to the rate?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if Chief Frederickson's okay with it and the city administrator, we could, if we receive any intercept statements in the next few weeks, we could hold those until they contacted our office and made an adjustment to them moving forward. And we could go about that way to be sure that we weren't doing any more of them at that higher rate.
Okay, my only concern is, I think the elected body's concern is that, you know, if the recommendation now is to make adjustments to the street, and we now know that our current rate structure is in violation, that we want to make sure that we are able to correct that violation. And so I was looking at a timeframe in which, is there a grace period, or how do we do that, or is this something that's immediate moving forward? So as Counsel Paulson justfully and rightfully is requesting, that information for us to consider what our loss structure, loss would be based on the structure changes to the rates adjustments. But at the same time, you know, what is the, is it, the clock is ticking on our ability to make these adjustments with respect to ensure we're not in violation. So I'm looking at a timeframe in which to do so. Is this something that we have to immediately address, or do we have three, six months to do so?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I'd recommend you address this piece immediately. I think that either way, under Minnesota state law, the license held by the city, you have to respond with it. I think the OIG issue is a bigger issue. Obviously, the budgetary side's a longer conversation and get these numbers pulled together. But I would recommend that the city moves as swiftly as it could to adjust the intercept rate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGalpin. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my concern comes before this discussion, when the city received via Chief Lewis a letter dated August 14, 2019, with all of this information in it. And yet, at the end of last year, 2021, we were presented with the rates, and we approved them without having all of the information as stated in this letter. That's a huge concern to me, and I don't understand why we were not given all of this information at that time. I appreciate that we're six months into the new rates, and now it's come forward. And I'm stating that because I'm trying to process why, why the recommendation was made, and if there's an answer for that, I'd love to hear it. So I guess I'll stop there for a pause. Is there a reason why we were presented with a proposal that is contrary to a letter of information that was given us in 2019?
Mr. McGalpin, can you answer that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I did bring it to Chief Lewis's attention before that, and I did recommend that the rates were not moved to that level. But I believe until he contacted me and asked us to send a letter out, that those were the new rates, probably February-ish, March-ish. Maybe February was the first time that I had heard that they had went to that level. And I had invited Chief Lewis to a meeting with some of the area ambulances, probably latter part of the end of the year, '21. And I believe he was out of town at that time. But we did recommend that we should probably leave him at the current. I believe the last rate was around 400, if Chief Frederickson or somebody remembers. And I, and I believe part of the frustration was, is that what we're seeing, the comment on the Rams proposal, Virginia ambulance is being, and we're seeing it with what I call our larger hub, paid ambulance services around the state, you are getting lots of demand to uphold the infrastructure, and you're not getting reimbursement to do that. And I wholeheartedly agree 100% why I think we're talking about taxing districts and other things around the state, is I've been in EMS since 1983, and I've never seen it this bad across the state for staffing, payment and finances. And I think the frustration was this continued request when these ambulances been staffed in ambulance services. I believe in my conversations with Chief Lewis, that was his frustration, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you. I want a quick question before we go back to Counsel Paulson and then over to-
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't see your light there, so. Please continue, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you. So Chief Frederickson, would it behoove us to, I don't know, or Brett, maybe this is a question to you, to completely rescind that entire rate structure? Or is this a specific issue, or is the entire rate structure that was presented problematic?
Yes, what was, when you're talking about presented, was it just intercept rates? Pardon, I didn't mean to interrupt you, or was it, was there more in there?
Well, I'm looking at the resolution that we approved December 14, '21, effective January 22, with the list of billing rates. Are they all?
Do recall that list. All we're asking today is that intercept rate.
Okay.
Let's get into compliance, not jeopardize any penalty, which would be disastrous. What I'm asking for today is get into the compliance windows and-
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Johnson, that rate schedule recommendation, besides the intercept rate, comes out of our office as we look at statewide averages and the usual sequestration numbers and the increase that Medicare and Medicaid allows. So everything but the intercept, there is a representation out of our office.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Johnson. Thank you, Mr. McGalpin. I'll move to Counsel Paulson, and then back over to Counsel Bearable. Counsel Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. One other question, and I think, Mr. McGalpin, this would be for you. Is it possible, since fuel rates have gone up so high, is it possible to do a fuel surcharge?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Paulson, I actually, besides, of course, when in Transmedic, I'm the lobbyist for the Minnesota Ambulance Association, in the budget bill, which was tanked at the end of this, and the great things the city probably had in there too that didn't get done, we had a fuel escalator in there for all those services, recognizing the fuel increases. You can do a fuel surcharge on the commercial market, but we can't do that on Medicare/Medicaid without statutory support.
I'm so sorry, I can't hear you on that last couple of points.
Yeah, we would, we would have to have statutory support on Medicaid. We could send a fuel surcharge to the commercial payers, but Medicare would have to authorize a fuel surcharge federally, which of course won't happen. And I'm kind of here in the state legislature, may not have a special section until after Labor Day, so I've been exchanging quite a few emails with the governor's office on non-emergency transportation and emergency, that as the fuel's at $5 a gallon, and I know Chief Frederickson's dealing with this, can you run a mental health patient over to Fargo? And when you start charging $250 to fill his ambulance up, he's really losing lots of money on that transportation.
Yeah, and that's exactly where I was going. So what you're, what you're stating to us right now is that on a commercial pay, you could in fact enact a fuel surcharge, but not on a Medicare/Medicaid run?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel Paulson. Before we go to Counsel Bearable, Mr. McGalpin, you know, this is a tangent question with respect, but it begs for a larger question as we move forward with other opportunities with the state legislature, et cetera. Now, are you familiar, and I'm sure that you are, with the 2002 Minnesota Department Health study on rural ambulance services and the crisis that we had? That was based in 2002. I know not very many approvals have been given as a result of that, but are you familiar with that, that study that was prepared out by the Minnesota Department Health in 2002?
Yes, I have. Yep, and there's another one that just came out too from the Office of Rural Health, which is even more damning about the future of the EMS industry.
And thank you for that. I knew that was coming up, I didn't know it was done already. So if your office could maybe forward us a copy of that, so we can review that as we move forward with our ambulance structure and the way we provide services?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Counsel Bearable?
Yeah, I've got a question, Mr. McGalpin, and both you and the chief. Let's use a hypothetical here. If we were to send out an advanced life support to, say, to Tower for an intercept for a heart attack, does our ALS person normally jump on there and then succumb, or do we transfer the patient? And if we jump on, who does the billing? Does Tower do the full billing as an ALS run then, or do we still do the billing? Because we might be able to get around some of this stuff that Mr. McGalpin is talking about for billing. If we do that on an intercept, how do we do that? Do we do either or?
As far as providing the service, it's called dependent. If we deem we have to move too much equipment from our ambulance to theirs, we put them in ours. We have that decision as the paramedics on scene. If it's something where we can just grab a bag and a monitor, we try to offer them that.
And medications, if you need to, for cardiac-
Everything we anticipate needing, but that's the key word, is anticipating.
Who does, how does the billing work then on that?
Buck?
Now, Ms.?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counselor, it's by law, it's the ambulance that delivers the patient, has to commit the ball. So if one of Chief Frederickson's paramedics puts in the Tower ambulance, although they're licensed basic life support, Medicare allows us to bill Medicare/Medicaid commercial. We're allowed to bowl at an ALS run to receive the higher reimbursement, to be able to subsidize for the paramedic in the ambulance. Part of that anti-kickback OIG discussion. So it is the ambulance that delivers the patient is the one that bowls.
So then, how do we get reimbursed for our paramedic that's on board? That's, isn't that a violation of what you were just talking about, kickback?
No, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, only if we keep it below that $400 number I recommend, or like a 50/50, it's about 823 or 53, I got it on my other computer, my computer, on the average reimbursement, is as long as we pay that level of tech time and not the higher 600, we're safe. And the good thing is about your area is Transmedic bills for Tower, Evolus, lots of the Nashwauk, lots of rural ones we work with. Well, that statement is generated out of our office, and we send an ALS intercept statement to, say, the city of Tower or Evolus on behalf of Virginia. We collect that money into Transmedic and balance that with the city in the checkbook.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGalpin. Thank you, Counsel Bearable. Counsel Johnson, and then back over to Counsel Paulson. Counsel Johnson?
Well, and just to clarify, because I just had ambulances at my house two days ago, there's no question of who's paying for what at the time of service. So it doesn't matter who's picking up who and what ambulances are at the, there's no way to know that until after everything's said and done. And that's when the billing happens, and that's when we can determine how much and who's paying for what. Is that correct?
That is exactly the case. We do not discuss billing while providing care. That's-
Yeah, and- Yeah, and I just want to clarify that, because it sounds like we're budgeting while we're providing service, and the service provided by all of our local EMS is exemplary. So, and just, I'm going to make a motion to move this along, so that we can know what we're talking about. So I will move to have staff propose appropriate intercept rates for ratification at the next council meeting that meet the compliance of the AKS.
Okay, motion by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Freely for the discussion. Do you have some more discussion, Counselor Johnson? Okay, we'll go back over to Counselor Paulson, and then hear from anybody else with respect to the discussion on this motion. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you again, Mayor. And again, this is for Mr. McAlpin, just based off of Chief Fredrickson's comments about, you know, how they hop on and who gets the billing, and now I understand it's basically the ambulance that delivers the patient. How does Transmedic, I'm assuming that you're getting, you're receiving information from the paramedics who are actually doing the work, and then you're translating that into medical coding for billing, is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Paulson, so if the run sheet, Virginia ambulance will still do a run sheet to paramedic, and they'll put on their intercept with Tower ambulance, road with Tower ambulance. That run developed by Virginia doesn't generate a bill, but then Tower ambulance will put on their run sheet. Virginia paramedic was on the ambulance. So then we are able to bill that advanced life support rate on the Tower ambulance side. And there's not a statement generated from the Virginia side, except the $400 rate, let's say, for the ALS intercept would come out of our office.
So you're receiving information based on the run sheets that are filled out by each community, is that correct? And then you determine at that point which community gets to bill?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Paulson, correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. It's just confusing, and I want to understand it as best as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Thank you, Mr. McAlpin. Any other comments, concerns, questions with respect to this particular issue? Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. So when we send out an ambulance, we were given a number as to what that costs the city to put that ambulance out on the road, and then we will only get compensated back at the slower late rate. How long, and I guess that will come out of the financials for the last two years, as to how long we can realistically do this without being fully compensated for what it costs the taxpayers to put that ambulance out. And my point before was, it's frustrating that we have to serve this large area. If our ambulances are out and the Virginia person needs an ambulance, we don't have one. And that's my frustration. We, I don't know how long we can go backwards. So I'll be interested to see the financials on this and take a look at where we're headed down the road without proper reimbursement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Any final comments, Mr. McAlpin?
No, I just want to say thanks for all the work. Chief Fredrickson's been great to work with earlier. I am working on one other piece of legislation for governmental ambulances for next session, Mr. Mayor and members. It was a pilot started with the Hennepin County, Big Hospital did it, and it's been very beneficial for Medicaid managed care payments to increase almost $300 a run for Medicaid. I'm doing that on the Transmedic side and not more from the MAA side, because we have governmental's, privates, not-for-profits. I've hired a new finance person at Transmedic that comes out of the Department of Human Services that did supplemental payments. And I think, I think you all see how well the legislature works. Very frustrating not to be able to get that done there. I think with what the cities and the Rams group is doing, we have some real tough issues coming up for EMS, and we have to address them. We are not an essential service in law. That's another conversation, which hopefully would help with some government funding, but I appreciate all the hard work, and the city has always been very active with our EMS association, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McAlpin. I just have one more quick question for you. This pilot study, and I read a little bit about that a while back, and this is, was for Hennepin General Ambulance Service through the Hennepin General Hospital?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, thank you, Mr. McAlpin, very much. Any other questions, comments, before we go move on to the next item on the agenda? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. McAlpin.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number four, approve the resolution to apply for and accept funds from the DIRIRR for a commercial redevelopment grant for Uptown Virginia, formerly known as Virginia Mall.
And as we talk about this, as we speak, I think it's today, the IRR's meeting with respect to our request.
Not this request, no.
Not this one?
No.
It's a different one?
This will be different.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Britt. Okay. Questions, comments, motions? Counselor Johnson?
I will move the resolution authorizing the city to make application to and accept funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources Commercial Redevelopment Grant for the Uptown Mall.
Okay, thank you. A motion to move forward with a request to apply for funds, is there support? Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Baraboo. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
Yes. Britt, could you explain to the public what this actually means, so the public will understand?
Yep, it will act as a fiscal agent for a grant for the Uptown Virginia or the mall for a portion of demolition that they're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
Just one comment, Mayor. This is not the first time we've done this for the mall. This is the second time, and it's been very fruitful for the mall, and they're going to put all kinds of new outside entrances in, and this is going to be a huge project, if you've read about it, it's going to be absolutely a big project for Virginia. Doesn't cost us anything as a pass-through.
And we just hope that we'll get approval for that grant funding, so thank you. Counselor Baraboo, it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is Lead Recreation Assistant Position. Final modified job description is in your packet. This was presented at the Committee of the Whole Personnel Meeting on the first of June, but now it's not colored anymore. It's all one color. Final clarification, everything is in there.
Okay, thank you. And at our last Personnel Committee of the Whole meeting, we recommended approval for this modified job description to be brought for the Committee of the Whole for final action at the council meeting next Tuesday. Questions, comments, motions by the elected body? Counselor Johnson?
I will move approval of the Lead Recreation Assistant Job Description as presented in this packet.
Thank you. Move by Counselor Johnson to approve, is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And then the next item is the Memorandum of Understanding that we are proposing with ASME Local 454 for the wage adjustment that was discussed at the Personnel Committee of the Whole on June 1st.
And that's the $22 an hour? Okay, thank you. Looking for council questions, comments, or council action?
I will move the Letter of Understanding.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the Letter of Understanding, is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
Further support by Counselor Baraboo, further discussion? Has this been approved by the ASME, or is this?
Nope, has to go to ASME still for approval.
Okay, thank you. So it's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Roll call, please, Pam. Thank you. Uh, no.
Yes.
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 Motion passes six, one, thank you.
Item number six is to approve the resolution for hiring of recreation assistants.
I'll move the resolution.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the resolution of the hiring of recreation assistants, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven is approve the resolution for hiring of baseball coaches for the 2022 season.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freely, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, I'm sorry, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a recent discussion regarding our baseball program, and I'm wondering if our parking director can maybe help me or answer some of the questions that I have. So is it, is it still under, I know 10, is it 12, 10U, 12U is now a Rock Ridge activity, or am I incorrect in that? And I want to know, my ultimate question is, who's paying, is it under, like, what age for the kids? And then the city's paying for the coaches? Or if it's a school sanctioned program, should the school be paying for the coaches?
Very good question. We have had several changes this year. Let's start with softball. Softball is now all run through community ed, so we have no expenses with softball. We also take in no revenue from softball. They are still utilizing the field, so we still drag the fields for them. As far as baseball, everything below Babe Ruth level, which is basically your elementary, or from T-ball through middle school baseball, is still run through a parent-run organization. Used to be the Virginia Youth Baseball Association. They have now merged with Evolith and Gilbert to form the Rock Ridge Baseball Association. They are using our fields, fields in Evolith and fields in Gilbert. We take in no money for that, so we generate no revenue. We also have no expenses with that. Once we get to the Babe Ruth level and what was formerly Legion Baseball, which is this year going to be VFW Baseball, that is where we are the ones that are essentially running the program. Now, we do have a parent board that greatly assists with the operation of that program. That program wouldn't be as successful without that parent board. But all of the players for those programs, the Babe Ruth, Junior VFW, Senior VFW, register through us, so they pay $150 to register for the program. So we generate the revenue. From that revenue, our expenses are paying these coaches and also paying the umpires for those games. So we are-
Resolution, I'm sorry to interrupt, Brian. This resolution for these independent contractor coaches is for those specific teams-
For those specific teams.
And not for the other associations-
Correct.
-softball and the other baseball teams identified.
These coaches are for our VFW teams.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Counselor Paulson. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number eight is a request to review the information regarding citywide cleanup. So I have taken the liberty upon a request from a citizen to look back what we've done for citywide cleanups over quite a few years, and why it was dropped by the city council previously.
Now, as you review these, as we're reviewing this cleanup issue, Britt, just a little information about the citywide cleanup. We still have a policy in place, which we maybe could advertise for the citizens. If they have something that they need to go to the refuse, and they don't have the ability which to do that, they can still call our Park and Public Works Department and request that somebody come and pick that up and dispose it for a small fee, is that correct?
That is correct. It's $25 per pickup, and it has to be outside. We won't remove it from your facilities or your garage, but if it's outside, we'll-
Thank you very much. Counselor Baraboo?
Yeah, I thought that fee for pickup like that at Curbside was $25, and I see now we've reduced it to 10, is that?
It's 25, on the very bottom of that page that-
It's 25.
What is it? It says 10 up here on the-
Page 40.
Well, that's Mountain Irons, never mind. I read it wrong. Forget it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. And as I, and I've noticed this for years, we don't have citywide pickup, so I noticed a lot of people put large items. In fact, I was going to work the other day, and there's a full-size mattress back behind the dumpster. So what is the cost for a citywide cleanup? Because what we're getting is people just putting it out there, and the city picks it up for nothing, because it's not good to have it in the alleys, so-
Last time we did an analysis, it was $68,000, and that was back in 99, I believe. And the problem we were having at that time is everybody was calling, saying, "I don't have a vehicle to get it there." So then they just put it out in the dumpsters in the alleys.
So how was that paid for in the past?
City just paid for it.
Was it out of a garbage fund? Was it out of anything from city work?
Public works.
Public works? I just see this as being a perpetual problem, not only in our alleys, but I know that they are having to block off, I believe, the road to where the brush is. People just dump sofas, dump furniture. And I would really like to see the city make an attempt to do a citywide cleanup pickup somehow for the folks that, we're going to pay for it one way or another. They're dumping it in the alleys, and we just say, okay, we don't try to find out where it's coming from, who's leaving it there, and it's, I've been going down that alley for 24 years, and it's consistent, the same dumpster, from ovens to washing machines to mattresses, always in the same facility, and we just go pick it up. So that's citywide cleanup that every other community has. I don't know how they do the funding for that, but I think it would really be appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich.
We're having a cleanup today, and because we don't have, we have only four alleys, everything has to be in the front of your yard. It has to be, it's being paid for by the city. Whereas in Virginia, we have the alleys, so it's very convenient, because nobody's watching, to dump it in the alley, and it just happens. But I just want to point out again that at any time, any resident can call Public Works, and for $25, they'll come pick it up.
And I think, to Counselor Biondich's point, I think we all like to have a citywide cleanup. We do have, with somebody on staff, the blight officer, who on every single day, with an assistant, maybe some summer labor and others, that's all they do, is pick up these mattresses, because when the refuse department, the garbage, goes to empty the garbage can, they can't dump the cans, so they got to call the blight officer to come in there to remove it and take it to the, up to the landfill, if they need to do that. And so the problem that we have, as opposed to other communities, they have individual cans, which they'd be held accountable for. We don't, for the most part. We have community cans, so it is difficult for us to determine who has it or not. But if there's a way that we can find a way in which to, you know, organize a citywide camp, find some funding for that, I agree that, you know, it would be who wants to try to help out the citizens in that regard, but I understand the challenges that we have. Back to Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. Could I have the name of the blight officer?
I will give you that information, I'll email it to you. We don't send out her name usually, because-
So where would people call?
Light. If you call City Hall, or call the city and ask for the blight department, you'll get somebody that will answer that information for you.
Thank you.
Yep, and if you want to schedule a pickup, you call Public Works at 218-748-7515.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. There's some food for thought. Would it be feasible if we did an annual fee? Like, I know we get an annual extra water billing fee to make up for something for the public. Every year on our garbage rates, we do an annual fee of whatever would be feasible. And then we could schedule, based on Public Works, I don't want to say downtimes, but less busy times, and plan ahead for maybe next summer, that everybody knows they're going to get charged, everybody knows when they're we- going to get charged. Everybody knows when their week is. It's consistently, you know, the same, the first week of this month. And maybe that's a way that we facilitate that for folks who can't get it out. And then people can plan ahead a little bit. And then we would also be able to mitigate the cost if it's just everybody in town gets charged for it. Because I agree with Counselor Biondich, those folks are out there. I had, after two weeks, I had, I sent an email going, "This has been here for two weeks." And it's, our staffer, in my alley alone, the garbage truck may or may not be able to get through based on how cars are parked, let alone a dumpster with a mattress and a box and whatever else. So, maybe if that's something we could do, staff could look into what a feasible annual charge would be, and then maybe that would help with a lot of that concern with the budget.
I sense a little, in the form of a motion to direct staff to take a look.
I would, I would make that motion to make it formal, yes. Let's, let's look at how we can create an annual fee and move forward with something like that.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Johnson to have staff take a look at the feasibility of adding a fee and come back to the elected body for further discussion on that matter. Is there support for that? Is there support?
No support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearable?
Yeah, Counselor Johnson, way back, we used to do a similar thing like that. But then you get tons and tons of residents complaining about a fee that they're not utilizing and not doing. Normal garbage fees, yeah, they utilize. But these special fees like that, they don't all utilize. You will not believe the people who used to get in this room when we tried to do that one time. That's why we picked up the whole cost of $67,000. I think it's prudent that we put this on the, on the budget process for 2023. Can't do anything initially. We don't have the money for it. But put it on our budget process in August and into September for looking at a way to figure it out. I don't disagree that staff can look into it, but that's what we ran into last time we tried to do, a fee schedule.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Bearable. It looks like a two-pronged approach. Based on the motion is to have staff take a look at a potential fee schedule to bring that back for us for further discussion. In addition to that, you know, as we move forward to the budget for 2023, we could take a look at that for a larger discussion with respect to that. So, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Counselor Biondich?
Thank you. Pam, would you be able to read the exact motion back, please? Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Paulson. Review the feasibility of charging an annual fee to all residents for citywide cleanup.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number nine is a request from law enforcement to hold a Special Olympics tournament on June 21, 2022 at noon.
Moved to approve by Counselor Freely. Is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Item number 10 is review and approve an extension amendment for the contract with Bird Rides Incorporated.
And what is, what is the, just for the general public's information, what does this entail?
I'm going to defer to John Sullivan, Community Development Planner.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure I heard, this is the Bird Ride? Okay. If you recall, back about a year ago, Bird Ride, this is a scooter company, they had came and we had approved a memorandum of understanding, and that memorandum of understanding expires in June. They never got up and running. And the reason they didn't get up and running is they had numerous fits and starts with staffing. They couldn't get a person, and they call it a fleet manager, to run the scooter fleet manager. So, as recently as three weeks ago, I got an email from Bird Ride stating that they were going to terminate the agreement, let it, let it drop. And then at the last minute, they got, they got a fleet manager, and it's a local fleet manager. It's a gentleman from Hibbing. So, they're pretty excited. He's got a shop. He's got mechanical experience. He can do all these things. So, this is fairly new development, and they wanted to renew the memorandum of understanding. So, they sent this. We, we approved this same exact document a year ago, and this is just an updated agreement. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll, I'll try to answer. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, John. Looking for counsel questions, comments, actions, or motions?
I'll move the agreement.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the extension agreement, contract with Bird Rides Incorporated. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich?
Do these have a motorized, they're a motorized piece of equipment, correct?
Correct.
And we had talked last time about this, being able to ride on the bike trails. Is that correct?
We talked about it.
Yes.
Yes.
There is signage for the bike trails with, for no motorized vehicles. So, I'm wondering how that's going to work. Because if you allow one, you have to allow all. How is that defined?
If, I'll have John define it. We do allow electric bicycles on the cart, on the-
These are electric. They're electrically run.
They're electrically run, yeah.
Not technically a motorized vehicle. They're electric.
Okay. I had just been approached by a person that rides bike trails, that there were, they had concerns about not only the motorized bikes, but any other vehicle being used on the bike trails. So, I will take that back to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Biondich. And thank you for the clarification on that, John.
Mayor, last year when we discussed this, we did actually have John approach the Masabe Trail Authority and ask them about this question. And they were in support of the bird scooters being ridden on the Masabe Trail.
Very good. Thank you. And I know there's a lot of electric bikes. My friends have them. And I love to get one because I can't keep up with them. But yeah, they do it on the Masaba Trail as well. So, thank you. So, thank you for the question and clarification. Counselor Biondich, so it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 11 starts the Iron Trail Motors Event Center discussion. Brian Silver, I'm going to ask for him to come assist. Item number one is review and approve the sponsorship agreement with Francen Bank. They are looking to put their logo in the ice.
Thank you. Back again, Brian?
Sometimes I never go away.
That's okay. We have positive news.
Yes. If you remember, last year in the Toyota, the Iron Trail Toyota Arena, we had both US Steel and Coca-Cola logos in the ice. This year, we are looking at adding Francen Bank. And so, the sponsorship agreement is yet another one of those revenue-generating components for the building and also provides advertisement.
One question for you, Brian. Does this in any way violate the contract with Iron Trail Motors Company? Or if it, if it doesn't, is it going a different part of the area? How does that affect the current agreement with Iron Trail Motors?
It does not-
Very good.
...pertain to the agreement with Iron Trail Motors.
Thank you very much. Just looking for that clarification. So, first, we'll go to Counselor Freely, and then over to Counselor Paulson. Counselor Freely?
I just want to make sure that the school district logo will be represented on the ice, and there'll be room for that with the addition of Francen in-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, are we being consistent? I didn't see a dollar value here. Are we being consistent? I know our agreement with Coca-Cola, I think, allowed them, I don't know if it was a paid for, was it paid for?
Yes.
And is it being consistent, then, with the value that Coca-Cola is paying and as US Steel is paying? Are we being consistent?
Absolutely.
Okay. And can we give that information out, the dollar value?
$2,500 for a year.
I'm sorry?
$2,500 for the year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Do we have a motion yet? Okay. Looking for more, more discussion, counsel action, maybe motions?
I'll move to approve.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the agreement with Francen. Is there support for that?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearable. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Francen Bank, for your participation in the sponsorship of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Very true. Item number two of this request is review and approve the quote for building signage that was forwarded to us by Iron Trail Motors.
I would move to approve.
A motion by Counselor Freely to approve. Is there support?
And if I could add?
Yeah, is there support?
All support for discussion, Mayor.
Thank you. Support by Counselor Bearable for discussion. Further discussion, first, Counselor Freely.
Just to make people aware that the city was solely and fully responsible for the cost that we would incur for the signage on the building. Iron Trail has moved forward to share the cost with the city and pay 50% of that cost. So, I think that was a very nice move on their part to provide that additional support. So, that's why I'm supportive of that, that they're willing to pay half when originally in the contract, the city was responsible for the full cost of the signage on the building.
So, thank you. So, there's two quotes in your packet. So, the motion is to accept which quote? Quote from Scenic Sign Corp. or from Masaba Sign? And just for discussion purposes, one company put together the entire package for Iron Trail Motors, and then Iron Trail Motors sent it out and then brought that back to us for consideration. These are the only two quotes. We do want to, do we anticipate, we don't anticipate getting any other quotes, apparently, because there's a motion on the floor to move forward with this sponsorship. So, my question is, which one? Which one are you, is the motion for? And which one is the support for?
Iron Trail is intending to go through Scenic because it's the lower cost.
Okay. And I won't support that. So, okay, thank you. So, it has been moved and supported to go to Scenic signage company. And for the discussion, I'll, I'll hold mine in advance until we finish. Everybody else, first Counselor Paulson, and then over to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Where is Scenic out of? They're out of St. Cloud. I know when we had, as a design team, when we had talked about moving forward and procuring things for FFNE, that staying local was a really big, important issue to us. And can you tell me what the difference that the Scenic is?
The $20,000 difference between the two.
What?
About $20,000 difference between-
Yeah, it's confusing how they, how they have it on the Scenic invoice. It ends in 13,9892.50. So, I'm confused.
Okay, well, maybe-
That's a deposit amount.
No, that's a deposit.
That's a deposit amount. It says 50% deposit.
Give us a total on each one, would you please, Brian, to clarify for all of us?
From Scenic Sign Corp., it is total of $27,785. And from Masaba Sign, it is going to, I'm not going to be able to do the math exactly, but we're looking at 30-
52,000.
50, thank you.
That's a huge difference. I'm just concerned because we've always wanted to go local, but that's a, that's a really big number.
And our, our philosophy was go local as long as it is financially responsible to go local. I would say with this large of a difference, I mean, you're looking at a 40% difference in cost. We have to be responsible to the taxpayers for how we are spending their money.
And I'm sorry I misread that. My next question, Brian, is when we had originally talked about the signage, did we not talk about the, the school helping us in facilitation of creation of a sign? Hadn't, hadn't we had that discussion?
I do not recall including the school.
But it was informally?
Yeah.
Or like an engineering department, or wasn't it?
Oh, yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, that was an informal discussion that went no further. And so, the action basically needs to take, we need to take action because of the city's commitment to Iron Trail. And this is the recommended action. Okay, thank you.
And before we go to Counselor Johnson, I'm going to say I'm not going to support this, even though there's a difference. I think there's a spec, to put all the specifications with respect to this, I'm not comfortable the way it's specked out here and who originally put this package together and then shopped around. So, I'm, I'm not ready to move on this until we find a more, more clinical approach as we find out the actual specifications on it and the quality of the signage that's being put up. Counselor Johnson, and then back to Counselor Paulson.
My first question is about lead time on these. Do we know anything about either-or proposal?
I don't believe we have lead time information on either one of these.
And I would have to agree with the mayor that the proposal from Scenic Sign Corp. is very detailed. Tells us exactly what we're getting. The proposal from Masaba Sign is seven sentences, if that. I don't feel like we're adequately comparing the two. Because my concern is that the quote for the side signs from Scenic is 8,000 apiece, and the quote for Masaba Sign is 15,000 apiece. The quote for the signs, the front sign is 10,000 from Scenic and 20,000 from Masaba Sign. And that huge of a difference, I'd want to know why. Even if it's a simple, Masaba has to outsource and is going to be paying somebody else to do it anyway, I would feel much better about approving it with more information like that. So, and I, this is another time when I look at the agreement, and we're being told by a private entity, this is what we're going to do now on your public building. There's no timeframe within the building, within the contract. It doesn't say within the first 30 days, 90 days, 120 days, this is going to happen. The citizens of Virginia own this building. They are paying taxes to support this building. They are paying fees to support this building. And I, I am not comfortable moving forward at this time, again, being told by a private entity how to run a city property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Before we go to Counselor Paulson, and then again to Counselor Bearable, I would ask Brian for a little comment or, or recommendation in how we proceed in moving forward. Brian?
Mayor, I've got no recommendation, but I do have a little bit of additional information that came from that meeting. And so, Britt can correct me if I, if I misspeak or if I'm misremembering this. As far as the lead time question, my understanding was that the representative, representation was that lead time was about six to eight weeks to have the sign up. And then as far as how the design was sent around, it was my understanding from that meeting that there was a specification developed for the exact sign that was, that they were looking, that, that was designed, and that that's, that specification was sent to Masaba Signs, Todd Signs, and then the Scenic. Todd Sign didn't return a bid. We received the Masaba bid and the Scenic bid.
Thank you, Brian. Counselor Paulson?
That's where I was going. So, the question that I then have is, who put out the RFQ or RFP? Was it the city or was it Iron Trail Motors?
Brian?
Mayor, I believe that Iron Trail Motors put this out, and they were being affirmative. One of the other considerations, and I think part of the reason that they were doing this was there were certain timelines that were laid out in the naming rights agreement, and we're far beyond those timelines. And so, they were trying to be proactive. And they, they brought this forward, essentially saying this is a goodwill offering toward the city, that they've created a design for our consideration, and that they would kick in money to, to help get it up.
Okay. And I appreciate that, and that leads me, again, to where I'm going. Within the contract, so my, one of the questions I have is, are we at 100% completion at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center? And I believe in the contract, it was based upon 100% completion rate. I don't know if that is stated in the contract, but I believe it was based upon the Iron Trail- Motors Event Center being complete. And you can review that. It's just a point of clarity that I have. And then, I mean, I really appreciate Iron Trail Motors, you know, stepping out and doing this offering. I'm just concerned, again, like Counsel Johnson's saying, that it's a private entity doing the process instead of the city doing its process. And I don't know if legally we have to do our own process. I don't know. I mean, that's coming from a private entity to go for a request for quote or a request for a proposal. So does the city need to take its own action step based on our previous practices for this type of activity? Since we've been pretty consistent all along within our FFNE and our design process, who goes forward with the RFQ or RFP? And that was basically further clarified with the YMCA and the Precor, who is on the lease and da-da-da-da-da. So I just want to make sure we're being consistent and should the city have taken that leadership role in that process?
Anybody else have questions other than myself on the council? Maya?
Thank you. Is there money still set aside for this sign in that budget for the facility?
In the budget? It's in the budget.
And how much is allocated or how much is in the budget yet and what do you still have left to do?
Brian, do you have your FFNE? Do you have your budget with you?
Brian, could you-
I do not have those budget figures with me or handy.
It was in the original budget though, right, Brian?
But to answer your first question, Mayor, Counsel Byard.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, we still have some, we have 1.5 million in investments yet and we have approximately 700,000 yet from deed. We will not get the money until it is completed, which I'm hoping, what is it, occupancy certificate should be awarded in October, I'm hoping, so.
Very good. Thank you, Sheri, for that. Counsel Bearable, but beyond this, anything else? Okay, very good. Thank you. Counsel Paulson, then back to Counsel Bearable.
I'm looking at when it was the MECC, the contingency. I don't know if there's a date in here of the snapshot in time, but we did not put in our FFNE the exterior signage that I can see on our necessity list and then we have a wish list. So was that built into some other portion?
We did have a change order for signage where we removed the signage that was bid in the project.
But I don't see that on our FFNE budget.
Correct. It was not under FFNE. It was under the construction budget. We had signage and there was a change order for deducting the signage. And so that was under the construction budget, so that money-
So we deducted that out of the construction budget?
Still in there. You deduct, you leave it in the budget.
The money's in the budget. We deducted the change order to put the sign up at that time.
I'm just trying to clarify where, because we just said it was in FFNE and it was not. It was not allocated under our furniture fixtures and equipment list.
No, it was-
It was part of the construction budgets. The Carl Sanderson was responsible for it, but we did a change order to remove it out of Carl Sanderson's contract, out of the construction portion of the project, not the FFNE.
And what was that dollar value?
I do not remember that dollar amount.
I will look up in the council minutes for that, but I don't have that top of my head.
Okay, that, I just want to make sure we've got the money for it because we don't have, I don't think we have any dollars allocated for any left on FFNE from what I can recall. And we still have to put in the mural. So I just want to make sure we're pulling the dollars from where it was originally budgeted or originally we did the change order. So if we could look that up, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Before we go to Counsel Bearable, Brian, do you have any comments in that arena?
I don't know about that arena, Mayor, but I've got, I'm hopeful, two answers, answers to two questions that were posed. First, with regard to the timing of the signs, there's no connection between, there was a 30-day period and there doesn't appear to be a connection between the 30-day period and the final completion of the arena. That being said, it's not necessarily to have the signs up because that would obviously be a part of the completion of the arena. But what the contract says is that the parties have agreed to a 30-day period to finalize locations, dimensions, and designs of specific signage. And that seems, it appears to relate back to 30 days from the beginning of the contract. As it relates to the legal sufficiency of the process here, because of the dollar values that are involved and because of the fact that there were two bids received and three bids sought, this would legally satisfy the municipal contracting laws in Minnesota. And so while it may or may not fit with historic practice, from a legal standpoint, it's not legally deficient.
Thank you. So there is a motion on the floor and a support to accept the bid from Scenic with respect to this. So is there any further discussion on that motion? Counsel Bearable.
Mayor, with the auspices that we got on this bid and the participation that Iron Trail Motors is putting into this, I think it would be absolutely foolish to go back out a second time to look at this because they've offered to put in, what, 50%, Brian, of the cost of this particular project. And it's over the contract time basically already. I can't see, because state law allows you to go plus or minus 20% of bids if you want to stay with a local, if I'm correct on that, from past practices that we've had. If a higher bidder is 20% differential between a low bid, you can do that. But this is absolutely more than double. I mean, that's crazy to spend taxpayer money on something that Iron Trail has the auspices with all the businesses they have across Wisconsin, Minnesota, all over with signage for their buildings and their car dealerships. They know where to go to get the best prices. I mean, that's crazy that we don't take a look at this bid and accept it. From my perspective, I won't vote the other way, I can tell you that right now. I want to save the money for our taxpayers in the next budget coming, because we've got huge requests for budgets coming in '23 already.
Well, and I'm not going to support the motion for a variety of reasons, but primarily the fact it's not the cost issue to me, I mean, it's an adjustment, is where the quotes came from. They came from Iron Trail Motors, not from us. This is proposed by Iron Trail Motors. We didn't go out for bids for this. We didn't do this. And I know what you're going to say, Counsel Bearable, but I just want to say my piece. You know, this is my right to vote yes or no if I want, just like everybody else.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, Mayor.
So that's where I'm at. So it has been moved and supported to go with Scenic on this matter at the cost of whatever that is in the bid, which is what, 27,785? Is there any further discussion? Counsel Freely.
You know, by that lease agree, or not the lease agreement, but the sponsorship agreement, I think, Brian, we had like 30 days to act upon that and the city failed to do so. So over the course of the last eight, nine months, Iron Trail finally took the initiative to move forward with that and, like I said, made an offer to at least pay half of that so that we don't incur the full cost of what was originally intended for the city to have to pay. So I think that's a good thing. But just to continue the conversation, I also think it's time for us to put signage on that building because I think it's critical for it to be recognized as an event center from a visual perspective when you're driving through town. The thing that I'm troubled with, and I've spoken to management at Iron Trail about this, is, and I think, you know, when we went into this sponsorship agreement, I really think we were a little naive and we were gung ho and provided way too much leverage to the sponsorship entity and took away leverage from the municipality. And my point being, for example, and I talked to them about this, now Brian has done a lot of work to get the rock ridge programs to be fully scheduled at that arena. And right now, in this conversation that led to this signage conversation was that they intended on maintaining the Center Ice logo to be the Iron Trail logo. And I wrote to the management and I said, the XL Center does not have XL in the center, it has the Wild logo. The US Bank doesn't have US Bank in the middle, it has the Vikings logo in the middle. The Target Center has the Timberwolves logo in the middle. Every corporately sponsored event center has the home team located at the Center Ice or center of that facility. And I said, having your sign lit up on three sides of the building, at the center logo of the Chevrolet Arena and throughout the building in multiple ways adequately provides for your business to be advertised throughout the communities. And they just wholeheartedly disagree with me, which is fine and I can respectfully disagree. But that's what I'm troubled with right now, is that we gave up too much leverage from a municipality standpoint to provide opportunities for local programming to be highlighted in the facility, a facility for which essentially it was built for that type of program. So I'm frustrated by that, but bottom line is, in this last meeting that you had, it was to kind of get the city off the dime to move forward with the signage that we agreed to in the agreement to provide onto the city, onto the building. And Iron Trail came forth and said, here's what we've done. These are the renditions that we would like to see. I think they're very nicely done and that we're willing to pay half for that to just get us moving forward on this. And I think it's timely to do that at this point in time. Would I have preferred to have seen it provided to a local vendor without a doubt, but if the local vendor is going to be, you know, putting out a bid that's two times the amount that they can get it elsewhere, then that's the fault of the local vendor, I guess. So anyhow, that's why I'm moving this forward. I think it's time to get the signs on the building so it's visually apparent what that building is for people that are driving by. And so that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know I'm going to have to leave in about five minutes, so I don't anticipate I'll probably be voting on this, so it'll be a six vote instead of a seven. Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Sheri, I don't know if you would know this, but is what they're willing to pay half upfront, are they going to take that out of the payments that they make monthly to us or is this in addition?
The discussion was it's in addition to.
Is that correct? I need clarification.
Brian?
That's the way that I understood it to be presented, that it was an additional payment that they were going to make.
And Brian, is that how you understand it as well?
Yes. And I do have an answer to your previous question of the amount of the deduct that we had. Back in May of last year, we accepted a deduct from Todd Signs in the amount of $23,947.37.
So it covers the cost?
For the signage. And that money went back into the construction budget.
Okay. And then, Sheri, just another quick, the payments are current and they are what the stated agreement amount was.
Five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? First Counsel Johnson and then back to Counsel Bearable. And so I'm, I just want to go for the record, I have to leave for a medical appointment and I'm not going to be here to vote, but I would, if I was here, I'd vote no on that, on the motion. Thank you. Counsel Bearable, would you take over?
I certainly will, Mayor. Thank you. Who did you call on next over there? Steve?
Thank you. I will support moving this forward to the council meeting as a regular council meeting, but I would like clarification in writing that this is an additional payment. And I would like to see what it looks like. I think we got it in a separate email somewhere, but I'd like it included in the packet so everybody can see what the sign looks like and where it is. And then I will make my final decision on Tuesday as to the direction I feel is correct. Thank you.
Don't we already have a motion? No? Am I wrong? So this doesn't count at this point? We haven't, read that first motion that we had.
Moved by Counsel Freely, supported by, oh, actually, we don't have a second or did?
We don't have a second for that first one?
We did not get a second.
Okay. Then Steve, yours is still up. Do we have any support for Steve's motion? I thought I had-
Was it Counsel Johnson? Oh, Bearable.
I thought I had supported for discussion that first one.
Sorry, yes. To approve the quote from Scenic Sign Corp. for building signage at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center in the amount of $27,785.
Steve, do you want to, I think you made the first, you want to amend that to add your additional to that motion?
I would think it would just come forward as part of the-
It should come forward from administration, correct, Britt? Okay. And we have a motion on the floor that Steve has actually put forward. Do we have some?
Counsel Freely did.
Counsel Freely did, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, six to one? With one absentee or with the mayor being absent? Correct?
So everyone here voted yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, let's move on here to run 11D. Is that, no, C.
Actually, Fitness Center, that was actually Mayor Cuffey's request.
Okay.
The question he had had was, could we offer city employees a membership to the YMCA? And state statute does not allow us to do that, so I had to explain that to him this morning, knowing that he probably wouldn't be here for this portion of the meeting. That's not a feasible thing for us to do because it has to be a public purpose expenditure and it has to be less than $5 if it's going to be something we offer has.
Yeah, you're absolutely right on that. So, okay, let's move on and that one's a non-issue.
And then item number D is discuss modifying facilities use agreement between City of Virginia and ISD 2909 for use of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. And Brian Silver, Park and Recreation Director.
Do we need to close this?
Going to close session?
If you would like to, if the council would so like to.
I don't think we need to. Does anybody think we need to go to close session on this? I don't believe we do. This is going to be public eventually anyway.
We can close for negotiation strategy.
Okay. All right, is that a motion?
I'll move to close.
Yes, we move to close, is there a second? Counsel Freely? All those in favor of closing the session for this issue signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're now going into close.